Good dinner.
Sure.
You have three minutes.
Yeah.
You have three minutes.
He did.
He's usually one minute, one minute before a meeting.
I'm actually under two minutes.
This tracks with my day. Somebody just called and then texted hello. Where's our place for them?
I don't know, last, last time they joined us, remember? They weren't here early. No, they all came in together.
But where are they?
Should be in the stairwell.
Are they? Oh.
Should be in the stairwell, maybe.
Can you look? I've been so busy, but I had to set those.
Two minutes. They were in the stairwell.
Got them early Monday morning. I feel bad, I feel bad when that happens because it's not fair to a client when they get hit. Yeah, there was a car flipped over. Right by Otter, there was a car flipped over completely going southbound.
Really?
It, you know, southbound was a mess.
I heard it was a mess.
But everyone, of course, has to stop going north to take a look at it.
Yeah, I heard it was pretty messy then. I heard it was a little further south.
No, it's right around Otter. Here they come.
Oh, there's everybody.
Oh, here it is.
We send the correspondence queue.
Seven PM work session meeting is now called to order. Can I get a roll call of the township committee, please?
Certainly. Mr. Boonstra?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Mr. Melchion?
Here.
Mr. Shanley?
Here.
And Mayor Rubenstein?
Here. And can I get a reading of the open work session statement, please?
Yes, ma'am. This regular work session meeting of the Wykow Township Committee is now in session. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, a notice of this meeting appears on our annual schedule of meetings. A copy of said annual schedule has been posted on the bulletin board in Memorial Town Hall. A copy has been filed with the municipal clerk and has been emailed to the Record, the Ridgwood News, and the North Jersey Haraldan News, all newspapers having a general circulation throughout the township of Wykow. At least forty-eight hours prior to this meeting, the agenda thereof was similarly posted, filed, and emailed to said newspapers.
Thank you, Nancy. And can we confirm that the Finance Committee has reviewed and signed the vouchers?
They have, Madam Mayor.
Wonderful. And then can I have a motion to open the ten-minute public comment period? Two minutes per speaker for public comments on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the township of Wykow.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boonstra?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Melchion?
Yes.
Mr. Shanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Rubenstein?
Yes. Either come up to the microphone or please call 201-891-7000, extension 2220, if you wish to make a comment.
This is open to public?
Yes, can you please state your name and address?
My name is Joyce Stumkovsky. I live at 194 Fox Hollow Road in Wykow. The reason I'm here is, we have the brook in back of our yard and the culvert. So I know with the hurricane, it's unavoidable, but we had thirty-three inches of rain of water in our basement. And I called the town several times, and our property gets hit the worst because it accumulates by the culvert. It's all, it needs, I'm just asking if it could be cleaned. There's all rocks and leaves in there. And even with regular rainfall, like heavy rains and thunder and lightning, the brook is getting worse. Overflows and seeps into the yard. And even if they could build the walls up, you know, along the brook, years ago, they gave us a new culvert, but they didn't do the one that they said they were gonna do. They were gonna, supposed to do a cement, and they gave us a similar culvert. But I'm not asking for the whole, you know, street. If they could just do my property where the culvert is, you know, along the...
We can certainly have Mr. DeGennaro, our township engineer, take a look at it and see, you know, what, what the town's responsibility would be and what possibly that we can do. But I'd, I'd like to have Mr. DeGennaro look at it.
Yeah. I did send an email to Mr. DeGennaro and to Scott Fisher, and they told me to reply to FEMA, which I did. But I would like them to come and look at the brook. All I'm asking is if it's possible for them to come in and, you know, dredge it a little bit and clean it up.
We, the township doesn't dredge or clean out waterways going through the town. So that's, and Mr. Shannon can speak to that a little bit more, but that's not something that the town does.
Well, they did it years ago. They dredged.
Yes, and Mr. Shannon was...
Yes.
Couldn't explain further.
Years ago, the DDP would allow the town to go in and clear out brooks. Today, we, we just can't go in there. Now, I was around when those walls were reset and the town did not dredge the channel. They just reset the, the gabions with the, with the stones in there.
Right.
I will speak with Scott Fisher and Mark and see if we can get in there and do something called de-snagging, which is removing any logs or blocks that may be, that may be preventing the free flow of drainwater. But we'd also like to ask you for your assistance. We have a problem in that area with, some folks tend to throw their grass clippings, their logs, their brush in the channel, and that's what causes a lot of the water to be delayed. Could you call the police department when you see someone doing that?
Oh, sure.
Because that's the primary, primary cause of that. And we issue public information about not, you know, throwing things into a water course. We call it preventing pollution. We have a whole social media program on it, so we try to do as much as we can through education. If you observe anyone.
Right, if I see anyone.
What we wanna do is, we don't want to find them, we just want them to stop doing it.
Right, right.
Because it hurts their neighbors, like yourself.
Right, right, because it seems a lot to build up on our side because we have the culvert. And I was just wondering if they could just clean that part out, you know.
Yeah, excuse me. Ed, Ed Stumkovsky.
Hello, Mr. DeGennaro. Nice to meet you.
When they put the culvert in, what was it, fifteen, twenty years ago?
Approximately.
They were supposed to put a cement culvert in that goes, like the one, but that goes on the Grandview Avenue along the creek. And they said they couldn't put it in because the sand soil or something?
Was too soft, yeah.
So they put the round one. It's a little bigger diameter than the original, but it still, you know, comes up and...
Right.
When it hits the certain diameter, the rest of the water has no place to go.
So...
Well, that culvert...
In other words, instead of going in the pipe, which is not rectangular, soon as it fills the circle up, gets a certain diameter, then the rest of it comes onto our property.
Yeah.
Which has been, you know, coming on but not into the basement.
Yeah, this is the first time it was, I know it was a hurricane, it was unavoidable, but it is starting to build up. We get, like you said, we get the breeze and coffee cups, and we get all kinds of logs floating in our yard. I don't know, we'll have to, I don't know where then.
Bob, I'm sorry, do we have a sign in that location saying, you know, not to dump or any, you know, disposal of cuttings?
It's private property, though.
Oh, is it?
It's all private property.
Okay.
I just have a question. Who owns, do we own the brook or does the town own the brook? I don't even know who owns the brook.
Well, the answer to that is we would have to look at your, your survey.
Okay.
And your survey would show how far you own. I know on some of the homes in Fox Hollow, they own to the other side of the brook, the Nancy Lane side of the brook.
Oh, yeah.
And then they're superimposed on top of that, on property to property, what's called an easement, a specific easement for the flow of drainage water.
We do have an easement, yes.
But I can tell you that...
That's across the creek.
Excuse me?
It's across the creek.
Your property?
On our property. We happen to go across the creek. You know, the creek is like going through the middle of the, of the backyard. There's a footbridge to get across.
Okay, or maybe, yeah. So would they at least take a look at it?
Yes.
And maybe to clean up our area at least, yeah. Okay.
We will, we will get Mr. DeGennaro and Mr. Fisher to go out and, and take a look at it. And if there's any brush that's, that's preventing the flow of water into the culvert, we can have the DPW removed. But, you know, again, we ask you for your help if you see anybody who's...
If I see anyone, yeah.
Who's, you know, sometimes people don't think throwing grass clippings and brush into a brook is littering, but it is. And I can tell you that that culvert was designed by Boswell Engineering and built, built by a contractor, and it was approved by Boswell Engineering. So I'm not sure I follow, follow, I mean, I realize a pipe is elliptical, and that's what you're saying.
Yes.
I understand that. So I will...
And originally, it was supposed to be rectangular, like the one, because at the time, I took pictures of the one going by Grandview, and it was my understanding they were gonna do that. But then they came along and said, I guess the cement is cost, more costly than a steel pipe.
Can I ask you whom told you that we were, that the town was gonna do a cement culvert?
Excuse me?
Can I ask, I'm sorry. Can I ask you whom told you that the town was gonna do a cement?
Who told you they were gonna put a cement culvert?
I don't remember. Twenty years ago, but that's what they were going to, you know, because I was at, at the meeting and showed them the type, and they says, yeah, we'll probably do something like that. But like I say, once, once they put the circle, it was fine with rain. I don't care if it comes up, you know, even with the property line, but when it goes over, if you look at it today, you'll say, oh, it's a little creek. You know, when we got the ground sloped with the stones along it.
Do you think they could raise the wall a little bit with extra stones or?
I don't know.
You know, this is a, this is a conversation for Mr. DeGennaro. But if you would leave your name and your phone number with Nancy, our clerk, we will definitely, once we've spoken to Mr. DeGennaro, we will absolutely reach out and keep you posted on what we find out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Mayor, I, I happen to know where they live. I'm a neighbor in that area, so I know where they live. I know exactly where you are.
What is your telephone number?
Is there anyone else? If you could come to the microphone, please?
Is this an open meeting?
Yes, sir. I can't understand anything with the masks on. Can you please state your name and address?
Yes, Dr. Alan Stumkovsky, 30 Lyons Street. I would like to ask the council, what are the town ordinances on fireworks? Anyone? Can you answer that? It just, it's, it's not an accusation, it's simply, are you aware of what the ordinances are for the town?
I'm sorry, this is public comment, not public discussion, so we're not, we're not gonna engage in ordinance quizzes.
Then I'm here both as a neighbor and as a professional. In the matter of the past fifteen months, I have had two neighbors who have thrown parties with children under the age of fifteen, in excess of twenty and twenty-five, and they were setting off M-80s in less than ten feet from children. Now, none of you will ever have the opportunity or the need to spend three and a half hours scrubbing gunpowder out of a fellow's face, a twelve-year-old's face. You'll never be at Jacobi where a mother is told that her son is gonna lose two fingers on his dominant hand or seen an eight-year-old with a corneal burn from sparklers. I believe that if you're gonna allow block parties, it should be stipulated that there are no fireworks. I have a red line for that, and I'm about to cry because I've been in that situation, and I've seen the devastation that results from it. I would like the council to sit down and among yourselves, come up and put in that quarterly mailing that there's no room for that around here. It says in the ordinances that a permit is required. That's all I can find online for our municipality.
Bob, you couldn't speak to that further?
My understanding is that fireworks are regulated by the state of New Jersey, aren't they? And I don't think they're, they're allowed in Wykow unless they're done by the, by the township. Now, you know, I'm not sure if a sparkler is a, is a...
Constitutes of firework, per se. I understand that aspect.
I, 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 I understand your comments, sir. I had a good friend that lost two hands, two fingers, as a teenager with fireworks.
Yes.
And I've, I have told my children, you see anybody shooting a firework, you run as far away from them as possible. I, I've had experiences like that as a young person growing up, so I, I share your concern. My advice to you is if it happens again, call the police immediately.
Right. Yeah, I've got a thirteen-year-old, a twelve-year-old, and a seven-year-old. I tell them to stay clear away from fireworks. And M-80s, I believe, are illegal in the state of New Jersey, so we don't even need an ordinance. It's against state law.
I, I understand that, yet I got mailings before the Fourth of July that just, you know, come out to Pennsylvania, we'll get it through to you. And it's like, what? You know, anyway.
Well, I would, I would urge you to call our police. Fortunately, we have our chief of police back there, so he's listening.
If they're setting off illegal fireworks, call the police.
I appreciate your listening to me. It, it was just, it was the worst experience, and to go then and tell them point blank that it was a red line, now, I don't know, you know, anyway. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for your concern and your comments. Thank you.
Seeing and hearing no one else, can I get a motion to close?
Motion to close public comment?
Second.
Mr. Boonstra?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Melchion?
Yes.
Mr. Shanley?
Yes.
Mayor Rubenstein?
Yes. So now I would like to call up Nicholas Bucci.
Don't be shy.
Get the book and everything?
Do I not have the book?
Someone from your family, mom? His mom. See, mom's a little nervous.
Hi, say your name.
Hi, Nicholas Bucci.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
I will bear truthfully and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established?
The governments established.
In the United States and in this state?
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God?
So help me God.
And I, say your name?
And I, Nicholas Bucci.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and partially and justly?
Faithfully and partially and justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of police officer?
Can you repeat that last word one more time?
Perform all the duties of the office of police officer?
Perform all the duties of the office of police officer.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my abilities.
And that I will not use my office?
I will not use my office.
To grant preferential treatment?
Grant preferential treatment.
Nor to seek personal gain?
Nor to seek personal gain.
Favor or advantage?
Favor or advantage.
Not available to the public?
Not available to the public.
So help me God?
So help me God.
So I think we're gonna save a few comments, and then we're gonna take some pictures, so I'm not curious if you can... Okay, so come around here.
Here, here, here.
Ah, wherever you want.
Okay.
So I wanna start. I, this was my first time having the honor of being a part of police interviews as part of the police committee, and I can tell you, from the first time we interviewed you, I was blown away by your dedication, your ability to work hard, your leadership, and just, what I could see is your compassion. And here in Wykow, where I think we're a pretty special community, you're gonna see a lot of community policing here. You're gonna be at the schools a ton. You're gonna see me running around late to pick up, and you're gonna see a lot of parents who love their kids and love this community. I can tell you today, the fourth graders at Lincoln School were writing thank you notes to the police and the fire department. So this is a special place, and we wanna thank you for choosing us as your first home to start your career. So welcome, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Rudy, you wanna go?
Yeah, Nick, just briefly, I too was part of the committee that interviewed and selected you to come to Wykow, and we really appreciate, appreciate you're here. Welcome to Wykow. I, for one, am very, very proud of our police department. You're joining one of the, one of the best group of officers that you'll find anywhere. I firmly, I say that from the bottom of my heart, they're, they're just a great group of officers. And, and you'll do fine, and they'll do fine, and I just, I'm so happy to have you here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Nick, welcome to Wykow Police. It, it sounds like you have great credentials, and we look, I look forward to getting to know you.
Thank you as well, sir.
Yeah, I was fortunate to have the opportunity to meet you over at the Training Center.
Yes.
After you paid any attention to me because you were pretty engulfed in what you were, you were...
He couldn't understand.
Well, I was part of it, too, but he'll learn. But anyways, from the bottom of my heart and on behalf of the township, congratulations and welcome to Wykow.
Thank you.
Nick, I suppose, say congratulations and welcome to Wykow.
Thank you.
And we look forward to seeing you at the cornhole tournament.
Yeah.
For sure.
All right, let's take some pictures.
Mr. Bucci, you're gonna be my crack at the cornhole. That's why I work with my team.
I'm there. Sign me up.
Can you bring mom and dad up? Do you want all, listen in? Do you want the chief in it?
Yeah, we can step out with the family, just do it. And you wanna go, take, take your opportunity right now.
Come on, Mark, you're family.
All right, if you guys wanna head out, you don't have to stay through our meeting, and we look forward to seeing you in a little bit. All right, Bob, eight PM business meeting agenda?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. The Municipal Clerk provided you with a revised copy of the agenda. We have added a resolution number 276, which is the workstation harvesting policy. It's part of the program we're working on with JIF. Although it was included in your packet, it was left off the, the agenda, and resolution 275 has been added to the agenda, and that's to, to continue another two years with a shared service with the KDA Board of Education. Other than that, there is no other change to the org, to the, to the agenda.
And PAIs?
Yes. In the packet was the Township Committee message in the 2022 calendar, which you know the theme is Wykow Parks. Mr. Madigan read it just before the meeting and made, made some changes on it. These changes are fine. Is everybody okay with it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you for your support with that. I did wanna point out to you that we received a report from OEM Officer Kyle Ferrara that FEMA was at Town Hall on Friday, nine twenty-four, fourth, and it was very helpful for a number of our residents. Wanted to let you know that the Mountain Avenue improvements begin on October eleventh. This is funded by two state grants we've obtained, and it's gonna take four weather compliant days. PSA's been issued through the E-News, social media post. Sergeant Zipfizikovich has already contacted the school's post office. has already contacted the schools, the post office, the garbage collectors, et cetera. Um, the cybersecurity awareness project team had a meeting last week, I provided, uh, uh, minutes of that meeting, I tried to write the, the work that we're doing in a very straightforward, non-technical way, and I hope you found it helpful. Um, a number of projects, um, I'm, I'm working on, um, I'm trying to complete, I have to complete this month, the employment practices liability program. I had a meeting today with Frank Rossi on the stormwater management, uh, plan, which is an element of our master plan and that will be, uh, will be moving forward and will be on the November planning board meeting for a public hearing and adoption. Um, and I'm also assisting Mr. Landell with the efforts to obtain Maple Lake. Um, I just wanted to point out that we have been posting a notice, a special social media notice on our website regarding, uh, this November, the municipal open space trust fund tax is on the eleven two twenty-one ballot, uh, to be renewed, uh, as a, as a voter question, should it be renewed for the next five, five years. I tried to provide you with some information in the packet regarding the valuable use that that, uh, uh, trust fund money is used for, it allowed us to purchase Russell Farm, two forty Demarest Avenue, uh, also for, um, uh, Maple Lake, uh, and it also serves as the hundred percent match for all the open space trust fund park improvement grants we have obtained. The Community Shred Fest event is coming up, it's scheduled for Friday, October fifteenth, nine A M. to eleven thirty, it's again is at the Wykoff Community Park. Um, on, uh, Town Hall will be open on October twelfth from eight thirty A M. to nine P M. for resident convenience for voter registration. And, uh, we did want to tell you that P D, the police department is advertising for towing vendors. This is an annual project that the P D does, part of establishing, um, a rotating list of towers which would help motorists who, who experience mechanical breakdowns on Wykoff roads. The Township Committee each year adopts a resolution typically the first meeting in December after the police department prepares their, their report and completes a thorough and complete review of the application and the towing vendor's property. And I, and I think that's all I have.
Thank you, um, let's get reports of the Township Committee, brief reports?
Briefly.
Brief reports?
Last night I attended, it's three things, uh, four things I attended, forget the rest. Last night I attended, um, an open house at Fire Company One with the, with the police and firefighters, um, for parents and children, it was a great event, even with the bad weather, it was well attended, everyone loved, um, Sergeant Fair's, uh, motorized robot and, uh, it was great. Um. I attended the, on Saturday, the Wykoff Municipal Picnic at, uh, Community Park. And it received high marks that I can see, very high marks, and I, I think, uh, it would be great if we could institute it as a, as an annual event. Um, the previous Saturday I did the fireworks, which were great, thanks to the fireworks committee. Um, I especially enjoyed the selection of songs that were played during the fireworks themselves, it was really great, kudos to the song selector. And, um, the previous week I attended Wykoff Day, which was more unusual, but it's getting started after pandemic, which is good, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Tim.
I'll be very brief, uh, just want to, you know, the fireworks were a, a success and we still are waiting for the final numbers on what was raised from, from donations, some donations are coming in, we just got a fifteen hundred dollar donation that just came in. I'll give a further report next time when the numbers are crunched and all the expenses are, are tallied and, uh, paid, uh, so I'll have better hard numbers, uh, next meeting, uh, but I want to thank the fire department, uh, the ambulance corps and the police department for making this a very fun and safe event. And I want to thank, uh, the police chief, the fire chief and, uh, and Scott Fisher, the D P W, um, chairman, uh, who helped us with the setup, helped us with everything we needed and especially, uh, Giuseppe Cassio of Lakeland Bank and Larry and Sarah of Shopright, who made generous donations that got us there. Uh, it was a beautiful community event, it was well attended by the, by the members of the township, township, co, co, committee was all there and we just had a, it was a great night. And you're right, the s, song selection was great and I think everybody enjoyed it. Uh, my only other report is for D P W, leaf collection starts on Monday, the, uh, eighteen, um, even though there's, a lot of the leaves are still stuck to the trees and.
Yeah.
They're not turning yet, but there's some that are starting to turn, there's at least one tree in my neighborhood that is all, you know, colorized, uh, they're all, there's not a green leaf on it, but most of them are still green. But anyway, that's my report, thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
Uh, briefly, the town picnic Saturday was a wonderful event and, uh, special thanks go out to Joe V. Endplat and the fire department for organizing and thank you to all those that supplied food and special kudos to, uh, Master Chef Pete Malkione, who did a terrific job.
Had a great supervisor.
And a great helper, helper.
Tom was on the grill for the photos.
Yeah. Uh, fire prevention week, uh, is this week and, uh, Rudy mentioned, there was an open house last night at, uh, Company One, it was a big hit and, uh, many youngsters and scouts were in attendance and, uh, was very, it was a great success. Uh, I too just wanted to mention the fireworks, I attended on September twenty-fifth, it was a great fun family night. And, uh, lastly, I just want to note the, uh, the pink ribbons around Town Hall in recognition of October breast cancer awareness month, thank you.
Wow.
Wow. We lost the over.
One minute, four seconds, that's fantastic.
Trimmed it down.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll, uh, be brief also, um, I attended, uh, Wykoff Day along with the Greek Festival, um, the fireworks, which I thought had a great finale at the fireworks and then as Tom mentioned, we were at the, uh, First Responders, O E M Municipal Town Hall Family Picnic on Saturday, Tom helped me on the grill there, we did a little tailgate, um, it was a great time, it was a great event and, uh, as Rudy said, I hope they make that an annual, uh, make that annually because it was a really good time. Then lastly, I just want to hope everyone enjoys their, uh, Columbus Day weekend coming up, don't forget to have a sausage and pepper sandwich, so, for people.
Um, I too attended the Greek Festival and the fireworks and the First Responders picnic, what was the other one? One more that you said, Greek festival.
Fireworks?
Wykoff Day.
Wykoff Day, exactly. Um, so we've had a lot of town events recently and I just want to say, like, I, that's one of the things that's best about this town is that people come to our town because we have so many community events and we bring people together all the time, so thank you to everyone who made all of those events possible, we've been eating for the past month now, so it was great, great events. Um, but I also was able to attend two ribbon cuttings for new businesses, um, these two new businesses happen to be in the Salons by J C in Boulder Run, which is a space where different, um, kind of beauty and wellness vendors each have a space and I was at, um, Melissa Wellness Beauty and I was also at Sunny Aesthetics, um, with Dr. Sinaz. Um, and it's amazing to see new businesses come to town and we now have three more ribbon cuttings in October, so wide variety, a bank, a fitness center, another wellness center, so we are welcoming businesses into our community and I'm thrilled to see new retail, new businesses, um, opening up post pandemic, um, so that speaks to the welcoming and health of our community and our business community, um, so thank you for that and thank you for the Chamber of Commerce to putting together some of these ribbon cuttings. I think that's it and I'd like to recess into, um, closed session for the last twenty-five minutes, if everybody's okay with that?
Still move.
We have to adopt the resolution.
Yeah.
We need a motion to adopt resolution twenty-one C seven and enter a closed session discussion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Bochta?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Malkione?
Will you come out? Yes.
Mr. Shanley?
Yes.
Mayor Rubenstein?
Yes.
Now we need a motion to, oh, wait, I apologize.
No, we're good, yeah.
With an affirmative vote, the motion is approved.
Going to the back.
Guys, it's sixty. When is our AC set at sixty-three?
Pete Chamberlain.
Oh, Pete Lord.
Where's Tom? We need a motion to exit the, the closed session.
Yeah, motion to exit closed session.
Second.
Mr. Boonstra?
Uh, Mr. Madigan will be here in a minute. We should wait for him.
Okay, we had a motion to exit the closed session discussions. We're just gonna vote on that.
Mr. Boonstra?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Melchiong?
Yes.
Mr. Shanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Rubenstein?
Yes. Do we need a motion to re-enter the work session?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so motion to re-enter the work session, please.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Boonstra?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Melchiong?
Yes.
Mr. Shanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Rubenstein?
Yes.
We need a motion to adjourn.
We're gonna adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the work session. Second.
Mr. Boonstra?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Melchiong?
Yes.
Mr. Shanley?
Yes.
Mayor Rubenstein?
Yes. Regular meeting of the Wykow Township Committee is called to order. Can we stand for the flag salute, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Rudy, are you doing the invocation?
I can. Now your heads, please. God in heaven, we come before you to thank you for all that you bring us here, and we ask tonight that you watch over us and cause us to make wise decisions for our township, in your name, amen.
Thank you. Nancy, can I get a reading of the Open Public Meetings Act?
This regular business meeting of the township committee of the township of Wykow is now in session. In accordance with Section Eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, I wish to advise that notice of this meeting has been posted on the bulletin board in Memorial Town Hall and on our Township Committee website page. A copy has been filed with the municipal clerk, and copies were emailed to The Ridgewood News, The Record, and to the North Jersey Herald and News, all newspapers with general circulation throughout the township of Wykow. At least forty-eight hours prior to this meeting, the agenda was similarly posted, filed, and emailed to said news service.
Can I get a roll call of the Township Committee?
Mr. Boonstra?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Mr. Melchiong?
Here.
Mr. Shanley?
Here.
And Mayor Rubenstein?
Here. Um, can I get a motion to open the public comment period, five minutes per speaker, for public comment on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the township of Wykow?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boonstra?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Melchiong?
Yes.
Mr. Shanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Rubenstein?
Yes. Um, please come to the microphone or call two oh one eight nine one seven thousand, extension two 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 zero, if you wish to make a comment. Seeing and hearing no one, can I get a, can I get a motion to close the public comment?
Motion to close. Second.
Mr. Boonstra?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Melchiong?
Yes.
Mr. Shanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Rubenstein?
Yes. And can I get a motion to approve the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one Township Committee work session and regular business meeting minutes?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Boonstra?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Melchiong?
Yes.
Mr. Shanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Rubenstein?
Yes.
With an affirmative vote, the motion is approved. All matters listed below are considered by the Township Committee to be routine in nature. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If any discussion is desired by the Township Committee, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Resolutions. Two sixty-seven, release performance cash, Forty-Three Park Avenue. Two sixty-eight, assignment of developer's agreement, Gallen Camp Court. Two sixty-nine, authorization of vouchers and payment of bills. Two seventy, return of certain overpaid taxes. Two seventy-one, invoke Title Fifty-nine Immunities Lightning Detection Warning System. Two seventy-two, extended contract clothes and shoes recycling. Two seventy-three, extended contract firefighter respirator mandate compliance. Two seventy-four, authorize redemption of tax sales certificate number two zero dash zero 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 five, Lot four three one, Lot four, four seven seven one, Birchwood. Two seventy-five, authorize K to eight Shared Services Agreement Vehicle Repairs. Two seventy-six, adopt a workstation hardening policy. And then, of course, twenty-one C seven to close session. We have no ordinances for introduction, and I have several motions. Approve and memorialize the closing of a section of Highland Avenue in the rear of the building located at two forty-four Everett Avenue for a private event for State Capitol on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, between noon and five P M. Highland Avenue is to be closed between Madison and Everett. The event to include a thirty-by-fifty tent over the parking lot of the building, valet parking, and the hiring of an off-duty police officer for traffic control. Approve and memorialize the installation of pink ribbons to promote breast cancer awareness on the trees and lampposts around Town Hall. Approve and memorialize Eisenhower Middle School fundraiser on October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, with a live band outside under the existing tent at Blue Moon. Approve and memorialize the Never End the Fight fundraising five K on October ninth, twenty twenty-one, beginning at nine A M. at Eisenhower Middle School, which will necessitate road closures in the Jamesway neighborhood for the duration of the event. May I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda? Second.
Thank you. Mr. Boonstra?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Melchiong?
Yes.
Mr. Shanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Rubenstein?
Yes. And may I, oh.
Go ahead.
May I get a motion and a second to adjourn the business meeting?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Mr. Boonstra?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Melchiong?
Yes.
Mr. Shanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Rubenstein?
Yes. I just wanna note that it is eight oh eight, and I believe the first pitch is eight oh eight.